Good morning. It's Monday, August thirteenth, nine AM. This is Muscatine County Board of Supervisors. I'd like to call the meeting to order. First is to review the agenda.
Move to approve as presented.
Second, motion by Jeff and by Nathan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes. Uh, next is to see comments from the public. Is there anyone that would like to come forward and address the board? See if anyone will come forward. We'll move on. Number four, discussion of possible action to approve claims dated August thirteenth, twenty eighteen, in the amount of three hundred and sixty-six thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two dollars and nine cents.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion by Jeff, second by Bob. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Number five, items with County Sheriff CJ Ryan. Good morning CJ.
Good morning.
First up is a discussion of possible action regarding part-time nursing hours at the jail.
We've had a bit of an issue lately with part-time nursing hours at the jail. And I think most of you are aware, we currently have a full-time nursing position and two part-time nursing positions. So, we fill the forty hours a week with a full-time person. We have two people that are authorized up to twenty-nine hours, filling this out with ninety-eight hours of nursing time per week. Quite some time ago, when we came to you to get the additional part-time nurse approved, it was to put us in compliance with ACH guidelines based upon our average daily population and the number of nursing hours that were required to provide. Since that point in time, our population has gone up and the current guidelines through ACH for a population of two forty to two sixty, which is where we consistently run now, is a minimum of one hundred and twelve hours up to one hundred and sixty-eight hours weekly of nursing time. So with the ninety-eight hours falling outside the ACH guidelines, the other problem that we've had is with our two part-time nursing physicians, they both also have full-time jobs. So sometimes through the obligations of their full-time jobs, they're not able to fulfill the twenty-nine hour a week obligation that they have to us, which we understand that their dedication has to be first and foremost to their full-time job. We'd like authorization from the board on a couple of different issues. Number one, we're going to be discussing adding a position of a jail medical records clerk. There's quite a bit of documentation involved with the nursing job and what we're finding is that our nurses are filling out all this documentation, doing bookwork, making medical appointments for people, and it's taking time away from them doing their actual nursing mission and seeing patients. We feel that we can add the, this position as a part-time position. The person will be responsible for the bulk of the documentation and records functions in connection with the healthcare of the inmates. This will free the nurses up to actually do their nursing job and see inmates and get that job done the way we need it to. The other thing that we'd like to address is in adding this records person at up to twenty-nine hours a week, if we have our full-time nurse and we have our two part-time positions, part-time nursing positions at up to twenty-nine hours a week, with the addition of the records person, it brings our medical hours up to one hundred and twenty-seven. So that will bring us once again within ACH guidelines. Now, part of the benefit of being within ACH guidelines is they are our healthcare provider that we employ inside the jail. As part of our contract with them, they provide us with insurance. So professional liability, including civil rights liability, with minimum limits of one million dollars on each occurrence or three million dollars annual aggregate. Now, they will stand behind us and indemnify us as long as we're inside their guidelines. So currently, we're falling outside their guidelines and it's our goal to bring ourselves back inside their guidelines so that we have access to the full benefits of ACH, including litigation.
So I have a question.
Okay.
The, this, all this is predicated on the number of inmates we carry?
Yes.
Now, I can remember times when they fell far below the averages we're carrying now.
Correct.
So with no guarantee to that level, which you cannot give us, what, how would you handle the situation or how could we handle it so it didn't end up in a negative impact on us by adding these people?
I think that we just have to assess it as we go along and that we have to watch our ADP and if our ADP would drop, that we have to reassess the nursing needs. So...
Under this, under this way of handling it though, is that available to us? Are there resrates because they're hired?
No, we're, I mean, we're in the boat that we're in right now because of our ADP. So we're notified by ACH that we're falling outside the guidelines. Certainly ADP would like us to have more nursing hours versus less, but in the, in the event that our ADP went down, we'd have to reassess the nursing situation. I don't anticipate that that's going to happen, but you're right, there's no guarantee of that.
And, and Bob, well, the one, the, the first request that we're, that he's asking for is that right now they're authorized for two part-time positions. Rather than being authorized for a number of positions, he's requesting that he be authorized for up to fifty-eight hours of part-time help. And so if he, we need to hire four people, part-time people to get that fifty-eight hours in, um, that's really easy to cut back on if the population needs change. Yeah, yeah, we just, we just dropped one of the part-time nurses.
Well, one of the questions or one of the issues there is CJ, you think that with the expansion of the part-time, can you get enough help to do it or do you have to have a full-time position to attract somebody? What's your thoughts there?
Well, this is Plan A. So, uh, it's our goal and our desire that we can hire some additional part-time people to fill those nursing hours. Part of that's predicated upon the fact that nurses a lot of times have strange schedules. So they might work Friday, Saturday, Sunday, twelve-hour days and they don't work the rest of the week. Something like that may be available to always fill a Monday or always fill a Tuesday for us. So this is the cheapest way for us to accomplish this mission in getting the nursing hours where they should be or the medical hours. We may find as we go down this road that we can't do it that way, that we can't attract the people to fill the job. Unfortunately, then I'd be in the position to come back and ask you for a full-time position because that might be the only way that we can fill it. But it's our goal to fill this with part-time people and get the nursing hours where they need to be.
Well, I don't see much of a choice actually. And there's, if I'm understanding correctly from Nancy, there's no downside as far as being locked in maintaining and retaining an employee. A sidebar question, I think it relates, but it's off the topic a little bit. So, we're currently at, what, two sixty-five, two sixty-three, something like that?
Two sixty-five this morning.
That's what I thought, yes. So, looking back at the history of this operation, to me, that number seems above where we could be, like over the cap. So what is the cap? How many could we really house? I'm sure part of that depends on number of female and male inmates and so forth. So what, what would we consider as I monitor this every day as to be a cap?
We're, we're actually full at two fifty-five.
That's what I thought.
So, we're a little bit over full right now, but sometimes we can accommodate that due to work release inmates and different classifications of inmates. But yeah, we're, we're quite full at the present time. I don't see that number going down. The federal government seems dedicated to continue doing business with us. Their inmate population in the state of Iowa has gone up and stayed up. We're also dealing with other county jails that are overcrowded. They're looking for places to house inmates. Clinton County supplied us with inmates. They're in the process of building a new jail, which we think should be completed soon. In the event that we lose the, the Clinton inmates, Scott County has already approached us and said they will fill the void from Clinton County. I think Scott County's outsourcing to multiple different jails already in the state of Iowa because they're overcrowded. They just had a bond referendum and Jackson County get defeated to build a new jail. So what we're dealing with is overcrowded county jails in the state of Iowa and many people that are outsourcing their inmates.
Now, the city doesn't have any jail facilities here at all, or do they?
Correct.
The cities for the most part don't have them today. It's pretty much no jails either, CJ.
You know, in years past, it was kind of traditional to have a city jail and basically what they'd use that for is to hold prisoners overnight until they can make a court appearance the next morning. But there's so many rules and regulations from the state of Iowa in connection with maintaining a jail and the standards that you have to meet that it became too expensive for most of these cities and they, they abandoned their jails. And part of our problem on the population side of things is we would generally see a fairly stable population of local inmates at around sixty-five. And, you know, we've gone up into the nineties recently. And we go through and assess and audit those prisoners to see if we have people that are, in essence, kind of stuck in jail here locally because of an inability to make bail, but we feel they would make their court appearances. And when we've gone through and audited our local inmates, we found that they're in jail for felonies. Many of them are in jail for violent crimes and they're people that aren't eligible for release and shouldn't be released. So our local inmate population has grown also.
Well, I just recall, if you're, I run into this daily, as you know, and I have since I've been on this board. And there was a time where we were sucking everything with that. We was concerned about the cost of doing business, the original thought, you know, that was put in, so it's going to be plus cash price or something. It wasn't initially and then went through a little bit more difficult. There was concern. So that, as you suggested, that's always possible. You don't know what tomorrow's going to bring. On the other side of that coin, and this would want to be through the need, a necessity of need. Any even small expansion thoughts on that at all? Have you thought about anything at all? I don't want to be surprised next year or something.
I've got a request into the Department of Corrections currently that we haven't received an answer back on yet to add eight beds inside our existing structure. So we do have a cell housing unit that we feel could accommodate eight more beds. It's going to require a variance from the Department of Corrections because we don't quite meet the square footage requirements. But based upon how we would manage that unit, we feel that we could get the eight extra beds approved. Now, that's no, no type of new construction or anything to the building. It's just adding eight beds inside the existing structure. And kind of cart before the horse type situation. I kind of like to pay my car off before I get another one and my car's not paid off right now. So I think that the sheriff's office and certainly this board made a promise to the taxpayers of Muscatine County that these expansions and these jail costs would not cost the taxpayer. And to date, they have not cost the taxpayer, so we've been successful in that mission and I'd like to continue down that road.
Yeah, we appreciate the job you're doing because you are accomplishing that goal.
I watch it very closely also.
So, just, this summer, I kind of, this, we're kind of getting both these, I think, the second one predicated on the first. So would it be, I mean, I like the concept of kind of giving the sheriff the leeway to look at the hours to stay within compliance because I think that makes sense and maybe that's what we ought to consider rather than a number here. Would that make sense that we?
Yep.
We give him the leeway to offer his part-time hours, flex them according to, you know, it's fifty-some hours now, right? But it might go to sixty, it might go back to forty-eight.
Yeah, kind of traditionally, we've viewed that as you authorize me to part-time employees. We're just trying to get away from the people aspect of that and saying, just give me the authorization to fill the hours.
Really ideal for this situation.
And he's, he's asking, he's not asking to go above the fifty-eight hours he has authorization for now. Just, just not be necessarily confined to two positions.
Well, that makes sense that, you know, I'd make a motion to the sheriff be authorized to keep the, keep the part-time hours to fill to the ACH requirement for number of inmates, the average saving of the population.
I'll second that.
Motion by Jeff, second by Bob. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Next is discussion of possible action to approve a class specification for a medical records clerk and authorize negotiation grade placement within the AFSCME payment classification system.
I kind of blended these two things into one because they, they make sense to discuss with each other. So this is simply the authorization to add this jail medical records clerk position, up to twenty-nine hour a week, part-time employee, basically to do all the paperwork that's associated with the nursing mission and let the nurses go be nurses and see patients. Right now, they're kind of getting mired down in paperwork and so sometimes this situation will come up. A med pass and the nurse isn't able to go do the med pass because they're doing paperwork. Now, the paperwork's essential and we document everything and document it very well because it's a good way not to get sued. So we need to continue the documentation that we do. We're just trying to free up the nurses to do nursing by creating this position.
So how does, um, the pay scale on this one relate, how are the pay scales versus the two nurses? Is it?
Uh, well, like I, like I told you before, it's, I'm doing this in the most economical way possible, right? So obviously the pay scale for a medical records clerk is less than what we're paying nursing. Now, the specifics about the wage scale have yet to be negotiated with you, but it will be at a, at a clerk-type pay scale.
Gotcha.
Are there special requirements of this kind of an individual? Do they have to have certain certifications or degrees or anything like that, CJ?
No, we've consulted with ACH and said, does this person have to have a medical background? Do they have to have certifications? And basically upon hire, they don't have to. So we can provide them with training or provide them with licensing as we see fit to, to help them do their job. The good part is, we said, if we hire this position, can we count that towards our nursing hours, our medical hours? And they said, yeah, that's quite appropriate, that we can count that inside of the hours that we provide per week for healthcare. So it's helping us fill those hours and it's helping us fill those hours at a lower pay rate.
Best of both worlds.
And I'm assuming you'd be able to fluctuate the, the, the need of hours should your inmate population slide south?
Yeah, exactly.
So you have the same situation there.
So, I'd make a motion to approve the class and specification for the medical records clerk.
Motion by Jeff, second by Nathan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, gentlemen.
And, and then once, once we have negotiated with, with the union and we have an actual grade placement for this, this will come back to you one more time for you to approve that grade placement, not authorize him to fill. So we hope to get that done pretty quickly.
Thank you. Next is discussion of possible action to approve a CLG grant application with Muscatine County Historic Preservation Commission member Lynn Pruitt.
Good morning, Scott. Morning, gentlemen.
Morning, ladies.
I've got a new project for you today. Actually, it was broached a few months ago. It's one that is a follow-up about, in two thousand and sixteen, we started the Planning for Preservation Study, a countywide study to look at all the historic resources that are in the county. We completed that study in two thousand and seventeen and on the end of that study was a recommendation of some things that could be followed up on, which, what are some of the historic themes in the county? One of those was historic country schools and country churches. So that was a, a recommendation that was put out there as one of the first things that we ought to do to follow up from this initial survey. So this is what we're doing right now. We're looking at doing a project to do a reconnaissance survey of all the country schools that ever existed in Muscatine County, all the country churches, and we've added on to it country cemeteries. Just while we're out there, let's get that information too. Cemetery information is, is pretty well known already, although I have run on to at least one that is well overgrown and there's no signage, there's no, you really have to know it's there to find it, go up a trail that's not been mowed and walk through the stickers and shrubs to find it. But anyway, it's in Pike Township. But the project, what we're asking for is to be able to submit for a CLG grant. This grant we can get because we are a certified local government CLG with the Historic Preservation Commission. These grants come out each year. The grant is due the end of August. There is a draft that, of this grant application that is due actually today. And I've been working on that. Perhaps there's some of it in your packet there which Sherry's looked it over and the rest of the commission has looked it over. It's a way of leveraging twenty-five thousand dollars to do this project. We would provide in-kind services from volunteers worth seven thousand dollars. The actual grant would be fifteen thousand. It would leave a cash match of three thousand to be provided to get the twenty-five. So I'm asking for your authorization to submit this grant application today. And we do not choose a consultant at this time. Under the CLG application, you wait until the grant is approved and then you go out to competitively get the consultants. So it's different from the HRDP process where you get the consultant in advance. I'm not sure why those are different, but that's what the state tells me. Any questions on that?
So you're going to achieve what by doing this?
What we're going to get, Bob, our ultimate goal is to get signage out at each of these country schools, churches, where they, most of them used to be. There are very few left, very, even fewer left that are on the original foundation. There's at least two that have been moved that I know of in the county and restored. But the, others have been moved and made into houses, other kind of outbuildings, whatever. We'd like to document where they were, you know, back in the day. I went to a country school in northwest Missouri for eight years and, uh, it's kind of nice to be able to drive by there and see a sign up and says, "Former home of Mount Tabor School." And I think it has the date it was established, that kind of thing, maybe the date it was closed. They closed it soon after I left for some reason. I don't know why. Anyway, and my wife, the same thing. She grew up in the same county and they had wanted her country, her country school assigned. So that's kind of what we're after, but before we get there, we want to get some mapping done, get these locations on maps. We want to use some of Eric's help to get the GPS coordinates of these schools and churches so that we know exactly where they were. When we did this previous study, I visited with some of the farmers out in the area, some that I know around Nichols and they said, "Oh yeah, we went to school up here and one's called Mudhole School." You know, I don't think that was the formal name, but that's what they called it, probably because of a big mud hole that was out there. But they all had names, they all had numbers and these are all, if you go back to the eighteen sixty-six plat maps, I think that's the earliest that we have, they'll show a lot of them on there. Some, I think, were established after that. So we have the eighteen eighty, eighty, eighty-nine and eighteen ninety-nine and the nineteen sixteen. Those are all ones we used in our previous study and they will, definitely the nineteen sixteens will have all of those schools on them to show where they were. We're trying to go out and actually find them in the field now, see what condition any remaining ones are. If there are some, we'll find a few, I think, that are still in pretty good shape. And churches, probably more churches we'll find, that will submit what's called an Iowa inventory form, which will then make them eligible to, or perhaps eligible to go on, get them on the National Register of Historic Places. So that's, the states really would like to see that happen. Any of these structures that are still out there and still eligible, they'd like to see us get those on the register. So we anticipate there might be as many as fifteen to twenty schools, churches, and then cemeteries that have some unique features that could get them listed as well. I mean, every cemetery is unique, but there's some that have some, some kinds of structures out there that are, are pretty neat. So total of all these, there might be twenty of those and that would be included in this fee to get those Iowa inventory forms prepared as a first step towards that. So basically a mapping job, an inventory, lots of legwork to go out and take photographs, punch a few GPS signals in and prepare a report.
So at this point, it looks like it's mostly an in-kind, this grant you'd go after may come back at some point, you need three thousand cash to fund the, if we could.
I think the, I think the intent would be to use three thousand out of what's budgeted for historic preservation?
Uh, we would like authorization to do that.
Yeah, and so they're not at, you've already allocated them money.
They allocated budget, this is what you want to use.
Right, yep.
The budget, you know, sometimes has different names on it, but it's, it's mainly for training, I think, was the original reason. But we'd used a thousand of it last year for the old barn to get it listed and out of that fund. So it has, it's not like it hasn't been done before, but there is plenty of money in there to do that.
I'd move to approve. Second.
I've got a motion by Jeff, second by Nathan. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes.
Thank you.
Just a question, your group is doing great work.
Thank you.
Yeah, they are doing great work. So, I guess this is defunct, but I'm kind of interested in the status of the old stagecoach.
The old stagecoach inn was sold. The, the people that owned it, I think actually a family member bought it, a descendant down the line of ways. At that point, they didn't want us to go ahead with, with any restoration or anything. It's, we had it listed on the National Register and so that's been done. It's just a matter of what, what do you do next? And so they have maintained it. I mean, it's still in the same condition it was as I drive by there. But we're not doing anything further with it right now until the owners show an interest in doing it.
But they may, huh? I mean, it's not totally out of the question.
Yeah, it was a, you know, it's a younger generation of that family that now has it, so it's not like it's gone or anything and we, we're hoping it will stay intact until
It's pretty special.
Somebody gets their interest up again to do it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Next is items with planning and zoning administrator Eric Purce. First up is actions to set up public hearing for Monday, August twenty-seventh, twenty eighteen at nine AM on a request to rezone approximately two point nine one acres in Tru-land County. First up is actions to set up public hearing for Monday, August 27, 2018 at 9:00 a.m. on a request to rezone approximately 2.91 acres in Truettland Township from C1 Commercial District to R1 Residential District. Tell me a little bit about that.
It's properties down in the vicinity of the old Thayer's Lodge off Highway 61, along the, what used to be Highway 61, it's now called Old Highway 61. There's around 20 houses there to south of the airport. This was the same property that a few months back, they petitioned to rezone to a C2 commercial. There was a lot of neighborhood opposition to that because of the intensity of uses that could be increased adjacent to existing residential. So that was not recommended by the zoning commission for rezoning. The owners of this property have apparently found an interested buyer that was in attempts to sell this property, who was interested in using it for residential purposes. So they reapplied for residential rezoning from the current C1, and the zoning commission held a hearing on that and recommended approval. Let's announce, we don't have time for a public hearing with you folks.
I'm curious, without looking at the map, is there more commercial there than that 2.91, or is that the extent of it?
That's the extent that these owners, that this owner owns. There is still a remaining C1 that's owned by someone else.
Someone else, okay.
I believe some across the road, but predominantly the use in this area is residential.
I know exactly what there is out.
Hasn't this been, there's been a lot going on with this over the years, attempts to get a rezon? So where are we finishing that story right now? This property, in addition to some rezoning requests, there's been some past land use issues, some violations of land use going back several years. It was previously used as a motorcycle club, clubhouse, and I think there were some issues involving law enforcement and special events down there that were outside the scope. This property, it's no longer being used as that. The owners have found a different property in, I believe, less, that they relocated, so we haven't had any violations or any issues with the current use. And so they just want to dispose of the property to help facilitate their move to this other more appropriate location for their clubhouse.
So their idea then is, if they get the rezoning, it'll be an easier sale.
They have a conditional offer continued upon, yes. Yes, the proposed buyer was in attendance and laid out his plan to build a single-family home, which I think would be much more important if he was surrounding businesses.
So I'd make motion to approve the public hearing.
I've got a motion by Jeff, second by Bob. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Motion passes.
Next is review and possible action to accept a variance granted by the Muscatine County Board of Adjustment on August 3, 2018.
Yep, one variance this month. This owner owns an 18-acre parcel along Moscow Road, almost all the way to the county line on the north end of the county. Purchased this property a couple of years ago. It was an old farmstead, had an existing old house, which is in the process of being demolished, several old egg buildings. He's working on his plans to build a new house because of some of the existing outbuildings that he wanted to keep. Desire to build a large bull frame garage and some steep slopes in the back, requested a variance that would allow that new bull frame structure to be slightly in front of the residence that he plans as well. So that's, that's what necessitated a variance. So the Board of Adjustment granted that variance based on, it's well back off the road. There was no issues with sight distance or visual instructions because it's 400 feet or more back from the, from the Moscow Road.
Yeah, I noticed they're going to leave some buildings that's
Yeah, there's a couple in front of the new, so. Much closer than this one would be, so.
Motion approved. Second.
Motion by Bob, second by Jeff. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. That's all I have.
Very good. Thank you, Eric. Number eight, item with county engineer Keith White.
Good morning, Keith.
Good morning. First up is discussion of possible action to approve various utility permits.
We have one this morning. Windstream Iowa Communications of Little Rock, Arkansas. They're replacing the existing aerial 84 fiber cable on 122nd Street. It's in the way of a project of ours, and so they're placing 3,880 feet of 96 fiber cable and removing the aerial cable. So they're putting in buried cable. It's just west of Highway 38 on 122nd Street.
Motion by Jeff.
Second.
Second by Bob. All in favor? Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Next is discussion of possible action to approve a contract bond and certificate of insurance for L M18 H273 H70 for seal code work at various locations throughout the county.
This is a contract with LL Pelling of North Liberty, North Liberty, Iowa, in the amount of $661,486.20. Are allowing a few weeks ago.
I'll move to approve. Motion by Jeff.
Second.
Second by Bob. All in favor? Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Next is discussion of possible action to approve a contract bond and certificate of insurance for L M18 H57370 for reclamation of seal code work on 112th Street, North Azet, and 102nd Street.
Yeah, this is a contract with Minatz Inc. of Brooklyn, Iowa, in the amount of $673,469.54. And essentially that's also known as the Steel Mill Road from Moscow over to Welton.
Okay. Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Jeff, second by Bob. All in favor? Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
I did want to show you one thing between the two contracts. This is the certificate of insurance on one, which we normally have, and we have one of those on this contract. But we also have this, you know, 50, I don't know its number, 50-page document, which is the insurance required by the railroad. Even though, you know, we're not going any ways near their tracks because there was a crossing down there several years ago and goes back like 50 and 75 feet. Fact is, we probably will set foot on their property, so. These are things that cost money. Just telling you. Contractor doesn't give it to us. It's included in these costs. That's kind of what it's like when you're working with the railroads.
Like working with the feds.
That's Iowa Interstate up there, so. That document is the additional insurance requirements? Yes. It's amazing. You won't read it. So, yeah, I mean, I find it, when you're going nowhere near the tracks, but we still got to connect or work up there and probably set foot on their property, so. Those are the rules. All right. Anything else, Keith? Nothing real new to report, other than on the maintenance side, the crack sealing work has been, by Denko's been completed. Did get one complaint from somebody in the public that had to wait, there were flaggers in the pilot car. We had timed and the longest wait we ever saw was 10 minutes. That's if you literally missed the pilot car and had to wait for it to come back, but people can't be inconvenienced that long. Anyway, that work's been completed, and then Denko returns the middle of the week here and they're doing surface treatment. We believe they're going to start on 130th, west of West Liberty, do half of that, and that's going to be, you know, three miles in one lane, traffic control. And on Wednesday, then they move over to Western, Stockton down to 61, and are doing half of the route, half of that. And same way, traffic control, then the next day they go back and do the other side of 130th, and back on the other side of Western, and then they'll do the south half of Western on Friday, and come back and do the other half of the south half on Monday. That's the plan. While they're permitting and all that, but again, you're probably expensing three miles of traffic control in a pilot car. And, you know, the complaint we received, and it's just, I could tell you if I thought I knew right now that they're out on 130th right now, and it doesn't mean they are. That means they've told us that, and, you know, we, most of all this type work is fast-moving, like the crack sealing, they pick up and set up. It's just really not very practical to try and give notice to the public of where they're at and what they're doing. Although this gentleman asked, like, okay, we'll email you every day what we think we know, but again, it's fast-moving. And I've told you the plan of where they start, and probably next Monday I'll come here and say, well, they didn't start there at all, they started on the south end of Western. They started on, you know, Thursday, but that's the best of what we know.
Keith, with the recent rains we've had, are you able to do any work on our gravel roads of a positive nature?
They've, you know, been outblading, and they're still frankly really dry and really hard, but they have been lightened.
Well, not everybody got the rain either, did they?
Perhaps not everybody and not large amounts, that's for sure.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Very good. Thanks, Keith. Number nine, discussion of possible action to approve a request to the regional governing board to draw down regional funds to cover the FY19 mental health budget. Community Services Director Kathy Anderson.
Good morning.
Good morning, Kathy.
All right, you have before you a letter that, addressed to the governing board with a request to draw down funds on a quarterly basis to offset a negative balance that we're going to have beginning in December. And the figures were put together, our budget administrator, Sherry Seawright, and so we want to go ahead and make that request. It looks like we will need the funds as of December. If we make the request now, that gives the governing board time to approve, gives the fiscal agent time to set up a payment, and so we can move on.
Very good.
I appreciate this, and this leaves a 20% balance.
It does leave the 20% fund balance, so we will have operating costs for the beginning of next fiscal year, because we don't want to sell ourselves short there.
Good, thank you.
Okay. Any questions?
I'll move to approve. Second. Motion by Jeff, second by Nathan. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
This will be on the agenda for the meeting.
It'll be on the agenda for the 20th meeting, August 20th, and so we will see what the governing board decides to do. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Next is update from Information Services Director, Bill Roddy. Morning, Bill.
Good morning. First off, I'd like to cover the help desk reports. In July, it seemed like we had a larger number of tickets than normal. 12 of those were merged, bringing it back down to a more reasonable number of 107 as opposed to 119. Looking at the categories, there were several in the software problems. A lot of that was just minor issues, ongoing issues with the encode, tax and financial software. We were having an issue with the wireless connection between the jail and public safety building. That was resolved, I believe, towards the middle of July. And then we've had some ongoing issues with WatchGuard and some Microsoft updates, causing some problems with WatchGuard server, which is what squad cars upload their videos to. So they were having problems with uploading or exporting their videos. Those should all be resolved now. We had several things in the user administration for newer deleted accounts. We had a few account lockouts, especially on some of the more public type stations at the jail or something where they wouldn't have the ability to just do an account reset or whatever on their own. We also had some account and permission changes, whether or not we were adding some of these permissions to a folder or to software or removing some of those. So hardware problems and hardware installation, a little bit hand-in-hand there. There was various issues with some problems with keyboards, some installation replacement UPS batteries, some stations that didn't have or that their speakers quit working, replacing that, so forth and so on. There wasn't anything like major that built, so. Any question on help desks, tickets or anything? We are continuing to work with the auditors on election cybersecurity. We'll be going with Betty on Wednesday to Cedar Falls for another meeting provided through the state. It's a tabletop exercise. A tabletop exercise at this point, that's as much description as we have, so. Other than if they provide lunch, I don't know much more. So we will be there on Wednesday. We did order, and they've come in, the new laptops. We do have the licenses for the remaining laptops for the Windows 10 Pro upgrades. So we'll be working on that here in the near future, getting testing going so that we're ready for the internal elections. Along those lines, we installed, or received and installed a device from the state on Friday that will allow them to monitor some of our traffic, internet traffic, to look for any abnormal, excuse me, abnormal patterns or anything like that, where they will notify us before they block or take any actions on the, anything that they see. It will take some time for them to get the metrics and so forth before they really start seeing some of this stuff, but it's another layer of security that we're adding. It's not necessarily for the election laptops themselves, but it would be for our network and the auditor's office systems. So that, that kind of handles that. For ongoing projects that we have, we do have the encode project. They're starting to move it to a positive direction now. We had some discussions with Tyler and our offices shortly before I went on vacation in July. They are working at different levels in their organization to try to find and resolve the issues that we're experiencing. They're looking at providing additional training to us if necessary, to be onsite, so they are working to get that resolved. So they're working more directly with our offices than they had been prior to this. So, and we're not the only ones that are experiencing these issues, Tyler and other counties are having lots of issues as well. So I think they've kind of sold something that it wasn't quite ready.
Probably why they're so willing to work with.
Well, it
It took a lot of fighting to get this. It wasn't easy.
Eventually, we got above the project manager that we've dealt with on this, and that's made a big difference. And one of the things I think that helped is, what we were hearing back is, well, no other counties are having those problems, and Amy had reached out and done some research and said, yeah, they are. Here's the counties that are having the problem, and that opened some eyes, so they're actually changing some of their training procedures so that future counties hopefully won't encounter some of the problems that we have, so.
And I had contacted other counties' IT offices to find out what problems that they had experienced and what they're using for experiencing. And so we had the information that it was not just us. And so we've had the information that it was not just us.
Yeah, it doesn't say anything very good for Tyler, as far as I've considered. When you're in denial and then you have to do the investigative work to find out that they've got problems. It doesn't say anything very good for the company you've chosen to work with.
Well, according to some of the things that they've told us is they found a lot of internal problems where they had trainers that were onsite training that weren't necessarily all training at the same level or the same solutions, so.
But that's their problem.
It is, but.
They think it's our problem.
Right, and you know, but again, we've made them aware of that and we're trying to get them to resolve that.
And they've been, since then, I think they've been very receptive to the things that hadn't been resolved here.
Right. I had reached out to several different people that I had contacts for within their organization and just said, hey, if we're not happy, we're taking a step backwards, not forwards. We know that you're trying to court, you know, Scott County, Lynn County, we're more than happy to share our results with your solution so far. If they would like to contact us and that seemed to really get their attention.
Well, that's positive. What about, who's their competitor or don't they have?
They don't really have one. They have solutions within the state of Iowa, but outside of that, they don't really have one. Solutions would really be going back to an IBM AS four hundred mainframe that a lot of companies are abandoning. It used to be about a fifty fifty split and now it's probably swinging much more in favor of Tyler just because of the advancements that they supposedly have made or have made over the past years.
Is Tyler a national company or just a regional or?
No, they're, they're national. They're, they're several areas. I believe that they're a parent company, so to speak, and they have lots of little companies underneath that they provide different solutions with, so.
They could, they could have a competitor, just not in the state of Iowa currently.
Right, and so.
Well, we need software that's specifically designed for Iowa. And honestly, I think, I think their product's good. I think once we get through some of these bumps and stuff, I do think users are going to find that they like this better, that you know, we can get the information better. Some of it's just the pain for us of, okay, that report doesn't look the same anymore. And some of it is, we either didn't get the training or you got inconsistent answers. If you had a question, it really depended on who you talked to and you got different answers. And I think they're working on that internally so that they can be more consistent, because that's very confusing to us who are just trying to learn the software when we're being told different things, so.
Right.
I, I think it's going to get better. I, I think people will be happy with it once we get through all, all the bumps and.
And I think in the past couple of weeks, really, people are happier with it. Now that they're listening to us and actually trying to work on the problems that we're having, so. That's been more of the feedback I've been getting over the past couple of weeks, so. Been working on, since taking over the printers last year, moving over to the IS office, seeing whether or not it would be cost effective to our benefit to move to a managed print solution. Based on what we spent last year on toner, it looks like it would be very beneficial for us. We spent roughly ten five, ten thousand five hundred on toner for last year. Plus, we had spent about another five thousand for our scanner maintenance, or printer maintenance program, which they had really kind of stopped fixing anything. They were just telling us to basically go replace it and we'll send you a payout check for that device. Company I would recommend and would like to work with is Advanced Business Systems. They have the lowest cost per page, black and white at point zero zero eight. Cost on color is point zero six. And the vendors that we've looked at all had roughly the same averages per month, about forty-five thousand prints per month in black and white, about five hundred for color. All that comes in at about forty-eight hundred dollars a year, based on actual usage. So if our number goes down, we spend less per month. If we print more, the numbers go up. One of the benefits that they have is basically, as opposed to reviewing your usage every quarter or six months and then changing your monthly payment according to that, they will bill us on actual usage. So we're going to be paying for what we use going forward. They cover everything except for paper.
So Bill, to help me understand this a little bit, we have, we currently have just various desktop printers scattered about the county?
Desktop slash office printers.
Okay, and then we're going to go to like all of them copiers, basically?
No. Not, not at this point. At some point, we would like to move that direction, but we're still working on getting copiers under the IT umbrella. Some locations, we can't really move to a multi-function only solution. So we're, we're trying to work towards that. A managed print solution provider should help us get there sooner than if we're trying to do it on our own, so.
Well, underneath your proposal there, your thoughts, so we're looking at maybe a sixty percent savings? Is that, am I hearing that right?
It is, because when we're buying our toner, we're buying original toner, OEM toner, so it's an HP printer, we're buying HP toner. They can use a third-party toner. The reason why I choose to use the HP toner would be because if that toner were to break inside the printer, HP will fix it, will replace the printer, will do what have you to make that right. Whereas a lot of the third parties, they'll replace their toner, but they won't necessarily fix your printer.
And that's the way it'd be through advanced.
Yep, and so if their toner breaks it, they're fixing it, so.
They, they've been around a long time. They've been a good supplier, right? Not just with, I don't know, with us, but out of the business world.
Sure, yeah. I mean, cost per page, everyone else was at least at one or two cents per page, if not much higher. So it was maybe also, you know, it was no brainer that they were going to be the lowest. They had several references. They have a four-hour window of support time. Generally, they have more than one tech in Muscatine at any given time, so their usual response time is two hours.
And then their response will be stocking all the toners and.
Yep, and they will send it to the offices as their software checks in.
It's just a month to month, or year to year, or what kind of?
Uh, we're looking at a one-year, just initially, but yes, we can build monthly. That's a benefit there. There are a couple of printers that if, say that they break right away, that they're older models, that they're reluctant to replace at one hundred percent their cost in the first year, unless we want to go with a longer-term contract.
We got a lot of those models?
Nope, pretty much down to two now. We've been working on replacing all those and standardizing as much as possible over the past couple of years, so.
Are those two, two that we would need to replace?
Uh, one of them's the assessors, which that would be on them because they pay for their own hardware. And the other one is in the cell office that they honestly may need to be replaced in the very near future.
So basically, you're just looking for assessors, I assume.
Right, yep.
I just want to keep you aware of that and I really looking for, uh, looking to move forward with them here, probably this week if at all possible.
I actually appreciate you looking into it.
It's a good project.
Excuse me?
It looks like a good project.
I hope so. Other things, fiber connection should be completed this week between the jail and public safety building. At that point, we'll start working on getting everything planned out, configured, so that we can switch over to that and have the wireless as a backup solution when necessary. The backup internet connection with Sentrylink. Sentrylink had it listed as we had fiber running into this building on, already, which they found out last week when they were here that we do not. So they're willing to bring it up to the property line. We just have to work with Lucas Communication to get that from our server room to the property line. So I'm looking, or working on getting some costs on that to see how much that's going to add to that project, so. And then we're continuing to work on Windows ten desktops upgrades and so forth for our own refresh policy. I was able to get a deal of about two hundred dollars less per PC towards the end of July, at the end of a model year. So we were able to buy twenty of those and hopefully get a few more done in this next coming fiscal, or in the current fiscal than we had planned or hoped to. Done a webinar for some different alternatives to our current antivirus solution. Doing a demo of one of those right now, just kind of a, a test to see how well ours is either performing or not performing. Currently, everything is looking good with that. We do run multiple layers of protection from different vendors. It'll eliminate some of that between email, the Mnet Gateway and our desktop. We've set up nineteen users with end-user training. Don't have that cost, I forgot to note that, but I think it was around six hundred dollars for those nineteen users. If we add more, it'll just be, you know, like a five pack or something to that effect. But I did notify offices and that was all that we had interest in at this point. And it's quite a list of software that they would have available to them, multiple versions of Windows, multiple versions of Office, as well as some personal devices like cell phones and so forth, so. We've implemented the new virtualization and storage monitoring software. I've received two hours of training on that last week. There will be four more over the next few weeks that we will receive so that we can best utilize that software for our advantage. And then know before, our phishing testing solution that we use. I've had discussions with them last week about a lot of the new offerings that they have for training, testing and so forth and so on that we'll start looking at after some discussions with the administration, how we can best implement that and whether or not we want to, whether it be what they call phishing or voice testing, some other things like that, so. Do you have any questions for me or comments?
I appreciate your help on the voting, working on the voting stuff, because I know Leslie was appreciative, because it's getting a little bit technical there.
No, it's definitely changing and it's changing quickly.
Yeah, well, that's a good thing.
So, all right.
I'll bring you the breaker.
All right, thank you.
Next is discussion of possible actions to approve a renewal application for a Class C Sunday sales and outdoor service permit for Arden Creek Vineyard and Winery. LLC DVA Arden Creek Vineyard and Winery, two three ninety-one Independence Avenue, plus I. Second. Motion by Nathan, second by Jeff. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Discussion of possible action to approve the minutes of the August sixth, twenty eighteen regular meeting.
So moved.
Motion by Jeff, second by Nathan. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Correspondents, Bob, do you have anything?
Nothing.
Nathan? I had nothing. Jeff?
Uh, nothing to note.
How about committee reports, Jeff?
Uh, yeah, sorry, Betty, I forget. On the seventh, I had the two meetings of the, one of the executive committee, the regional workforce board, then the regional workforce board. So I told you that there's been a, a big, lots of changes. We were going through a reorganization of the workforce board, just about done with that, and then the feds changed the law again. And so now we have to go back through a reorganization, so we're kind of slow rolling it. The, probably the best improvement that's been done is the governor signed a deal. Used to be we'd have to get a couple of applications for every opening and then they would go to the governor and they'd select. Now the governor said, no, the regional board can make their own application, so we don't have to go through that procedure. We need, we have a couple of openings we need to fill. I, I don't know how, whether we're going to do it or not, because it looks like we're going to reorganize again to comply with federal legislation. And there's a big study group going on now to whether it's a push to regionalize even further. You know, they're like, I don't know, we're region nine, so I don't know, there's like fifteen current regions of workforce boards. And there's a proposal out. You can't do one, but there was a proposal for two, four and six. It came back and somebody was, somebody was heavily, trying very heavily to weigh that to go to one, one direction. I think there was a little blow up on that here a couple of weeks ago. It didn't make a lot of sense. If you look at the workforce board and what we do in this region, we have a real difficult time keeping quorum and attendance anyway, because we go, you know, we're like a five or seven county area. And if you looked at the proposals, I mean, they're lumping counties, you know, way away. You're not going to get representation on these boards like they want. You're not going to, people aren't going to travel. It's not going to be able to find locations conducive. And I argue that your workforce and your, your environment, you know, like they'd lump us with Lynn and Johnson counties. Our, our workforce doesn't look the same. Our work doesn't look the same. It doesn't make a lot of sense, so. We'll see where that legislation's going, but we had, had two meetings on the seventh on that, so a few hours up there.
Board report, I'm sure.
Just sound like they're lost.
Well, I, I, you know what, I just keep giggling because the, it's just this whole, the solution to everything is consolidation and regionalization. It's like just roll it up another level, roll it up another level, and then we can get more and more detached from where the work really happens. It just makes perfect sense to me.
How about we push the work back down? That's maybe we save money. Get it on, so, I don't know. They're lost.
Okay, I had Saturday, Saturday the eleventh, Riverbend Transit Employee Appreciation Dinner for their Years of Service Awards. And that was very well attended, had over ninety people attend. It was just a really nice event and that was all I had.
On Monday, the sixth, I had a work session in the mental health region. Two things. First was to conduct a performance evaluation for our CEO, Laura Eelen. We gave her the award, we made sure she was doing a great job. Second thing was to work out a policy under five which counties will, in need, will draw down and make requests from the region. It quickly became apparent that we had no idea the circumstances that would present themselves in the future. And any attempt to make a binding policy would very likely result in someone, somewhere being hampered in a way that we had not foreseen, in which event we would simply suspend the policy and make the drawdowns as the county needed any. So I said, let's dispense with the idea of a policy. Let's instead put a resolution in that establishes guidelines. The question be known more than quarterly, that they should be done to keep a county above, you know, only, and their twenty percent fund now was in jeopardy, and so that was accepted. And I think that will work for us because it avoids any county having its hands tied by some unnecessary rule. It's ready to try and foresee all expectations and really doesn't foresee any. Second thing I had last week was the seven judicial, judicial correctional board meeting. A lot of just housekeeping matters. The main thing we looked at was the, we had, I believe, Sally Kreamer from, I can't remember her position, but from the state there to discuss the pre-sentencing arrangement pilot program, the big one on Scott County. A lot of us expressed concern, in fact, it's only being followed about a third of the time by judges. That it's, you know, we expressed concerns. I made some contact with our PPOs, made contact with our county attorney, who shared concerns with me and had those addressed, you know. And there was some, some heated discussion as to whether the appropriate amounts of data be being gathered and how. One thing I insisted that we really ought to have was a survey of the judges to see how they reacted to the pre-sentencing arrangement, since they were the ones who had to influence. Surprisingly, that was not anything anyone had thought of. So I was a little frustrated with that, but I think that they're going to. They at least told me they were going to try and put that in, so they made the reference, and that's it.
Bob, do you have anything? Nothing, okay. Next, receiving information from county employees. Any employees need to address? No? So we'll move on to items with the administration office. Discussion of possible action to appoint Mike Keller to the Mercer Muscatine Revolving Loan Fund Administration Board for a term ending June thirty, twenty twenty.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Bob, second by Jeff. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next is review health dental fund balance as of June thirty, twenty eighteen.
Well, the spreadsheet was in your packet.
Balance is looking all right.
Yep.
It's all over the place on payments.
We are, and we, we are again in a situation where we have a number of people with what would be considered high dollar claims.
Yeah, we have to, because I looked, you know, you look, we've been as low as a hundred and a third and as high as, what, two twenty a month? Crazy, very, really, very, so. Good thing we have a nice healthy balance. Have you seen, we, we're, we're still funding according to Walmart recommendation and things seem to be going.
things seem to go okay?
Yes, yep.
I don't, it doesn't look like it's, we're in any jeopardy on that one.
No, so far, we seem to pretty much be running stable here, so. But, but I, I agree with you. I, I'm glad we have the fund balance sitting there because kind of the, we're at the, in the valley in terms of.
Yeah, we've got rules, go ahead.
Yep.
Okay. Anything else to ask you?
I just wanted to let you know that Eric did receive notification from Clyde Evans that he, he wishes to resign from the zoning commission. He's willing to stay up until January 1st if he needs to, to, to keep the board full. So we're going to start the process of looking for somebody else and once, once we have somebody, we'll bring that to you and, and accept his resignation and, and appoint the, the new person, and if one fails, so.
Very good. If there's nothing else to come before the board, meeting adjourned. Is that?